I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome to the September 19th Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, Vice Chairman of the Board and at-large member, and I'd like to introduce my other members. I'll let them introduce theirselves, starting to my right.
Chris Howell, South Point Township.
Martha Church, Hurable Township.
Kathryn Roberts, Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Kevin Collier, Riverbend Township.
Doc Cherry, at-large member.
On behalf of the Board, we'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. Thank you for all being here. I hope you had an enjoyable summer and a great beginning to the school year. Our next order of business is our prayer and pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask our member Chris Howell to lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, I love you, Lord, and thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to gather here tonight to take care of business as it concerns Gaston County Public Schools. Lord, I pray that you bless the students, I pray that you bless their families, bless our staff, our teachers, all those who are involved and educating them. God, I pray that especially you'd be with those in the areas of our country where tragedy happened over the weekend. God, I pray that you would just watch over and give them comfort. God, I pray that things we do and say, we do nothing but bring you honor and glory. Well, we love you and say these things in your precious name. Amen.
Stanford pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have a proposed agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
No.
I have a motion for Ms. Cherry.
Second.
Second, Ms. Guthrie. Any discussion? All in favor? Sign to him right there. Okay, Mr. Booker, we got some good news tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Members of the Board, we are doing a little catch-up for some of our great activity that went on over the summer. So I'd like to start with a big thank you, and we have some representatives from the Glenn Foundation with us. If they could come forward at this time. They awarded a $15,000 grant for resources for our STEM lab at the New Hawksnest Steam Academy. You all are very familiar with the Glenn Foundation. It was established in 1972, and they have awarded almost $7.4 million in funds to over 244 organizations. And fortunately, the public schools in Gaston County have been a recipient of numerous grants, and we thank you for keeping up that vision that the Sisters have, where it says, "Where it is needed most and will do the most good." And we can trust this is doing well for us. And Ms. Cherry?
I don't think there's anybody in this room that knew Cherry or Lena Glenn, but they taught school way, way, way back when. And the story, I've been on many boards and these people have been, well, all of us have been on boards, and I don't think any of us have not been touched by the Glenns. But the story that I heard was, they didn't have a lot of money at all, but when they died, they deemed that all the money that they had, they didn't have children. Am I remembering correctly? Neither had married. And so they gave it to the community, and they said that all the money was to help Gaston County. So that was back in the 20s. Back in the 70s. Well, they were born in the 20s. They were born in the 1880s, but... And so since then, there have been millions and millions of dollars that have gone to everything that you can possibly think of that have been worthy in Gaston County, and the schools have been wonderful recipients of their gift. And it keeps giving and giving and giving. So on behalf of the Board, our Chairman, our Vice Chairman, our Superintendent, and Hawksnest, which is going with great guns, thank you, thank you, thank you. We hope you will continue to remember us, because we will gladly continue to take their money. Thank you. (applause) Let us thank you.
So let me just say, all you retired teachers, please feel free to do the same. (laughter)
organizations. One that a number of folks participate in is the Future Business Leaders of America. This summer, at the national conference where over 10,000 students attended, 12 Highland School of Technology students traveled to Atlanta for the conference. They were accompanied by their advisor, Rachel Martin. Two Highland students took first place in the nation in the Banking and Systems Competition. You all will recognize both of them as Alexander Matthew and Matthew Knowles, who both graduated in June in college. Elliot Steins, who is with us tonight, won second place in the nation in the Microsoft Office Specialist Word Expert Competition. He proved that by scoring a 950 out of a possible 1,000 points in the competition. Some of our other national competitors are with us tonight. Evan Null, who was one of only four students in North Carolina to compete in the Excel Expert Competition. David Hamilton, who competed in the Securities and Investments after winning first place in the state competition. Highland's FBLA Chapter also received the Hollis and Kitty Guy Gold Seal Chapter Award of Merit for the fourth year in award. The award recognizes local chapters which have actively participated in projects and programs identified with the goals of Future Business Leaders of America. Bailey Burchett, the Chapter President at Highland, is here to receive the award on behalf of the chapter. Congratulations to all the winners from Highland.
Ms. Martin, students, it's my pleasure to work these days. When I was the principal of Highland, it was the proudest moment. I loved our three clubs, and FBLA was one of my favorites. I enjoyed going with you, being with you, and I really did. Elliot, congratulations. That's your certificate. Evan? Uh-oh. We're one short today, but this is yours. And we always have, we're not short. (laughter) But I'm very, very proud of you, and we do appreciate all that you do for Gaston County Schools. I really do. Appreciate a lot of the things that people don't do, you do, that you do volunteer work, that you go out to other schools and help our students that are in middle schools. That is really an important thing. So on behalf of our Board Chairman and our Vice Chairman and our Superintendent and our Board Members, I appreciate that greatly. This says, "Holland School of Technology Outstanding Achievement, FBLA Gold Seal Chapter Merit Award." Congratulations.
Mr. Devon, Miss McLean needs to be up here. The current principal of Highland School. Good evening, Ms. McLean.
Good evening. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Members of the Board, I'm going to invite a large group up front now, I believe. If I could have Russ Paul and Ms. Wyant come forward and bring their students with them. schools earned National Yearbook Program of Excellence. And of those 555, only 27 of them were in the state of North Carolina. And so in 2014, Early College received a National Yearbook Excellence, and this year they are one of 27 in the state of North Carolina to be honored as well. So we wanted to welcome them and congratulate them on the award.
I had to confirm my suspicion, because I thought you guys had won this award before.
Yes.
And yes, you have. So that just shows what great of a job you guys are doing. I love seeing all the different ideas that the students have and the creativity that goes on with this. So excellent job. We are so very proud of you, especially getting it twice now. I may have problems with some of these names, so we'll see. Let's see. Go ahead and guess some out. Talia? Congratulations. Juliana? Go ahead and put them back for your pictures, they'll be ready. Alyssa? Aneah? Is that right?
No, no. I'm not here today, but we'll get it tomorrow.
I'll meet you first.
Thank you.
Elizabeth?
She's not here either.
Okay. I like the shirts, too. Kayla? Gracie? Casey? Congratulations. And now your certificate for the school for Outstanding Achievement, National Yearbook Program of Excellence, signed by our Board Chair Kenny Lutz and our Superintendent, W.J. Booker. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
How are you all doing?
Did y'all want to display your books in the picture, too?
Yeah.
I see you guys spring them.
We can get Ms. Wyant. (inaudible).
They show up.
Yay, just in time.
Let's try to do two rows, and see if you can...
Since I have certificates, you can sit down.
I can't see. You can't display it. Slide. All right.
I can't see you. Here you go. One more. Thank you.
Congratulations. (inaudible). Thank you. We appreciate you. Creative. And all your great... (inaudible). Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
that went on at Hurable High School, and tonight we wanted to recognize two individuals from there. First, Bailey Hindley is with us, and she is one of the school record holders, is a three-time All-Conference winner. She has single-season 641 and career assist with 1,736 for Hurable Volleyball. Last week, on September 14th, she was named recipient of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Performance of the Week Award. She is an outstanding student athlete and a three-year All-Conference performer. She has earned the award while helping the team win three games in one week. During that week, she was successful in 59 of 60 serves, with 12 of the serves being aces. So congratulations to Bailey. And she has standing with her, Coach Kaiser, what happened there?[1078.13][1078.13](laughter) But Coach Kaiser also earned her 100th career coaching victory as a head coach of the Lady Ironman.[1087.33][1087.33](laughter) She reached the milestone in a win over Bessemer City. She joined Hurable in 2010, and her first year, she brought the team to the first round of state playoffs, and since then, they've been a consistent playoff appearance, record-setting, including the first state tournament playoff win in school history. So we welcome you and thank you for what you're doing for our young folks.
Everyone thinks we play baseball.[1121.58][1121.58](laughter) We have our hidden talent in volleyball. This is a certificate of recognition to Bailey Hindley. Congratulations on outstanding achievement, NCHSA performance of the week award. Signed by our Chairman, Mr. Kenny Lutz, and our Superintendent, Mr. Booker. Congratulations, Bailey.
Thank you.
And to Ms. Kaiser, who hit the wall, I guess, for your outstanding achievement of 100 career volleyball wins. Signed by our Chairman, Mr. Lutz, and our Superintendent, Mr. Booker. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you want to date up here? Okay. Your family? Family? You got any more on it? At least I did have an arm, but with Charles, I'm wasting it. (laughter) Thank you. Congratulations. (laughter)
a foundation that came from their vision. Our last good news tonight is a big thank you to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity and the Open Book Foundation, because Sadler Elementary School received a donation of 1,500 books.[1280.83][1280.83](applause) And they didn't stop there. They also provided five summer leadership camp scholarships to fifth-grade students, and then when they delivered the books to the school this summer, they had a cookout with students and families. Omega Psi Phi is an international service fraternity founded at Howard University in 1911. Their principles are manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. The foundation's goal is to buy books for Title I elementary classrooms and also to collect books for community organizations. We're grateful for their efforts and very appreciative that they chose to share them with Sadler Elementary.
In the Greek world, I am presenting to my brothers, the Omega Psi Phi fraternity. I want you to know that I am pleased that there is an assault on illiteracy in Gaston County. We want you to know, as a librarian, we are very, very pleased with your efforts. We know that when you provide books, although the children may be limited in their travel, they can go anywhere in the world they so choose with all the confidence in the world, and I am very happy at this time. Now, Mr. Romero there was bragging about you long, long, long ago. He did that this summer, so we're very proud, and I am privileged to present to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity on behalf of Kenny Lutz, Board Chair, Gaston County Board of Education, for your outstanding contribution of 1,500 books to Sadler Elementary School.[1394.13][1394.13](applause) And since you presented so much to our children, we're going to give you one more plaque.[1405.15][1405.15](laughter) This one reads, "Presented to the Open Book Foundation, outstanding contribution, 1,500 books for Sadler Elementary School." I'm going to give this to the principal, if it's all right, brothers.
Sure, sure.
I'll share.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are so proud of you, and we want to congratulate you again.[1426.65][1426.65](applause) And you know what? I'm going to ask you to move, and I'm going to stand.[1433.33][1433.33](laughter) These are my brothers. And if you would, please go to the board.
(inaudible). Thank you for sharing all that good news with us tonight. Our next item on our agenda is public expression. Do we have anyone sign up? Andrea? Sonia? Okay, well, let's move on. Let's go to our classroom moment, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Bognay.
Good evening, members of the Board, Vice Chair Ramsey, Superintendent Booker. I'm pleased to invite my Executive Director of K-12 Instruction, Mr. James Montgomery, up to introduce our classroom moment.
We are so excited. I hope you are ready for this, but as you know, we have outstanding things going on K-12, and I'm here because of outstanding things in 912. But at Ashbrook High School, they have an outstanding teacher that I'm going to welcome up to the podium at this time. We'd like to welcome Ashley Rimmer, who is an English 10 teacher at Ashbrook High School, and six of her fabulous students that are going to join us as well. And with that, you're not here to hear me, you're here to hear them. So Ashley Rimmer.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. We're really excited to be here. As Mr. Montgomery said, I'm Ashley Rimmer, and I teach English 10 at Ashbrook High School. I realized last year that too many of my students think of English as a class you need to take to graduate, or as the class with the EOC. And I did not want my class to be the class that you have to take. I wanted to find a way to make an impact on my students' lives so that they could go back into their own world and make an impact on the world. And so I knew what I wanted to do, and I knew why I wanted to do it. The how was a little bit trickier, so how could I impact all of my students? This summer, I got the opportunity to take part in a really awesome professional development with Dr. Alan November. And Dr. November's entire philosophy of education centers around student-driven learning and empowering students to think more critically and ask questions about the world around them. And I wanted to take that philosophy back to my classroom and apply it, because what he taught us was amazing. And I realized, if I want to change the way that my students think, I first had to know how they think. And so my English 10 PLC and I came together and created a day-one activity with the different hands-on stations that showed us how students think as they're problem-solving together. So they went to the different stations, working in groups, and some of the stations were very hands-on, like build a Lego tower in a certain amount of time. Some of the stations were more philosophical, like, is honesty the best policy? And they had to argue their answer. Some of the stations were a little tricky, like stations with all-white font or typed in Japanese, to see how they use the technology to help them figure out the answer. And of course, some of them were English skills, because you have to throw that in there, too. So we had write-a-first-day-of-school haiku and some other things. I did the exact same stations and activities with all three of my classes, and I teach English 10 honors first period, then standard, and then AP prep. And I didn't change the instructions, and I didn't change the stations, because I wanted to see what my students were bringing to the table to start with. And what I found that day was absolutely amazing. Like, I wish you guys could have been in the classroom with me, or I could have recorded it, because you can't capture what I saw. It was absolutely incredible. Seeing my students think was more powerful than anything I've ever had as an educator to make my planning more informed. And so students went around in their groups, and they worked on the different stations, and I learned two very important lessons about students. The first one is you can't ever make an assumption about a student based on their academic level. Students at some of the stations in my AP Forever Honors classes excelled at particular stations, and my standard classes struggled, but at just as many stations, my standard kids excelled and my AP or honors kids struggled. And so don't make an assumption based on what a student's academic level is as to what they're capable of, or make an assumption that they're capable of something that they may not be capable of, to see where they are. The second lesson that I think has really informed my instruction this year is that I realized the quality of the discussion that my students were having together was far superior to anything they put on the paper to turn in to me. And I realized that having a way to empower that sort of student-driven collaboration is much more effective at student learning than them just giving me the answer to the question that I asked. And so I designed lots of different things differently this year to focus more on that collaborative aspect, the discussion...
at the other six schools? And is there something as a board that we can do to help facilitate that, give the tools, give the necessities to be able to do that? Because I would be willing to bet that in the ones that had the double-digit increase, Lingerfelt, the other ones that increased, that it wasn't necessarily money. It was resources, maybe some community involvement, that sort of thing. Have you identified any of that? I mean, numbers are great, and I think data shows us a lot, but I think seeing the intangibles, which are other resources that you can use. So are you prepared to answer that question, or should we?
Yeah, we're very prepared.
Well, let's get...
I'll say that if you go back to last December, when we were given the full implementation of what this low performing meant, we got the state board's action and those, we had a team that's led by those folks that sit over there at that table, Dr. Bocknight, Gra...
I just appreciate you thinking outside of the box because sometimes collaboration with your classmates can help you comprehend things a lot easier than listening to your teacher. And it's nice to hear that you're not going through the motions and memorizing for the test and then it's gone. You're actually comprehending, comprehending and retaining that. And I just am excited about it and I would love to come watch.
Mr. Collier?
I just want to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, y'all did a great job. I know you were nervous and thank you for coming tonight. I don't know if you're getting extra credit, you should.[35.11][35.11](laughter) Just throwing that out there. But you guys did a great job and thank you for coming tonight and sharing your time to come before the board. Really great job.
Yeah. Thank y'all again. Thank y'all. Our next item on the agenda is Ready Results and I'm going to call up Cindy Matheson. Ms. Matheson?
Good evening, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Board of Education members and Superintendent Booker. I'm very happy to have our Accountability and Testing Department with us tonight to tell you about all the great things that we've achieved this past school year. I'd like to introduce our Director of Testing, Pam Huff Stedler, and our Data Analyst, Suzie Bradley.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Board of Education members, Superintendent Booker. The Testing Department in conjunction with Academic Services would like to share the 2015-2016 Ready Accountability Results. Joining me this evening is Gaston County Schools' Chief Accountability Officer Derek Jackson and Testing Data Analyst Suzie Bradley.
DPI's model that is used to determine school performance grades is made up of both growth and proficiency components. The achievement indicators that make up the proficiency for each grade span are listed here. The integrated assessments for math, reading, and science are indicators used to calculate an elementary school's achievement score. A middle school uses those same indicators along with the addition of a Math 1 EOC. High schools have a few more indicators when compared to the elementary and middle schools such as ACT assessments, math course rigor, and graduation rate. As I previously mentioned, the school performance grade model is made up of both growth and proficiency components. Twenty percent of the school's performance grade is based on growth. Growth compares the actual performance of an individual student to their expected performance, which is based on their prior testing history. The remaining eighty percent of the school's performance grade is based on proficiency. This compares students to a standard. The achievement score means students have met the target. In the 15-16 school year, nineteen schools or thirty-seven percent of schools exceeded growth. Twenty-three schools or forty-five percent met growth and nine schools or eighteen percent did not meet growth. For our district's performance composite, in the all-subjects, we saw a 2.5% increase over the 14-15 school year. We had eighteen elementary schools and ten middle schools to increase their proficiency on integrated assessments. Within our high schools, end-of-course proficiency increased by 2.2% when compared to the previous school year. We had nine schools to show an overall increase in 15-16.
Over the past seven years, we have seen steadily increases in our graduation rate. Once again, our graduation rate increased 1.7% in 2015-2016. Additionally, we had seven high schools to exceed the ninety percent graduation rate. Those schools are Ashbrook High School, Cherryville High School, Forestview High School, Gaston Early College, South Point, Stewart Kramer, and Highland School of Technology, which had a 100% graduation rate. Another achievement indicator for high schools is math course rigor. Math course rigor is calculated by the percent of students within the senior class who successfully completed Math 1, Math 2, and Math 3. More than ninety-five percent of the class of 2016 completed those three math classes successfully. Students must receive a Silver or Better certificate to be considered proficient for the ACT work keys. Seven hundred and nine students received a Silver certificate or better. In 2015-2016, sixty-one more students received certificates than in 2014-2015. The ACT performance indicator is calculated by the percent of students who score a composite of seventeen or better, which is the UNC system's minimum score requirement. Six high schools had an increase in the percentage of students meeting that seventeen or higher state benchmark in 2015-2016. In the overall performance composite, Gaston County Schools had an increase of 2.5%. Out of our fifty-one schools, Lingerfelt Elementary had the largest increase with double-digit gains. The growth and achievement indicators we just reviewed makes up each school's performance grade. For the first time since this model was introduced two years ago, we had an A-plus school, Highland School of Technology. Furthermore, thirteen schools increased their school performance grade from last year. Forty-two of fifty-one of our schools, eighty-two percent, met or exceeded growth, which is a seven percent increase from 2014-2015. To conclude this presentation, I would like to share with you that in 2015-2016, we decreased our number of low-performing schools by fifty-four percent. In 2014-2015, Gaston County Schools had thirteen low-performing schools. In 2015-2016, we only have six of those thirteen schools remaining on our list. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for the results. I know that probably a couple of our board members want to have comments. So Doc Gatcher?
But I am thrilled. I am so happy to hear the good news. And I was told about a year ago that you were going to become data-driven, and that is so true. You are utilizing data and we certainly appreciate what you do and the outcome. The outcome is just phenomenal and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris? Mr. Howe?
Great job. I mean, I think system-wide, there's a, there's an increase that just shows that there's more buy-in from parents, there's more buy-in from students, there's more buy-in from staff. And I think that's taken place and I think it, part of it is some great leadership and some great places. So, but with that being said, there's still six schools remaining that are not where they need to be. And so here's my question, not an identification of what six schools they are, but is there a common denominator between the schools that are, the six that are left, the ones that increased, is there a common denominator between the two that kind of makes the schools look the same, the population look the same, of students, teachers, that sort of thing? And is there something that we did at the other schools, especially like in Lingerfelt, that had a double-digit increase that could be implemented that's not being implemented at the other six schools? And is there something as a board that we can do to help facilitate that, give the tools, give the necessities to be able to do that? Because I, I would be willing to bet that in the ones that had the double-digit increase, Lingerfelt, the other ones that increased, that it wasn't necessarily money. It was resources, maybe some community involvement, that sort of thing. Have you identified any of that? I mean, numbers are great and I think data shows us a lot, but I think seeing the intangibles, which are other resources that you can use. So are you prepared to answer that question or should we?
Yeah, we're very prepared.
Well, let's get...
I'll say that if you go back to last December, when we were given the full implementation of what this low performing meant, we got the State Board's action and those, we had a team that's led by those folks that sit over there at that table, Dr. Balknight grabbed folks, got them in a room and said, "What are we going to do?" We put all thirteen schools in a room and started talking about what are the common, just what you asked, what are the commonalities? Elementary together, middle together. We only had one high school. We started working that and those folks looked around and said, "What are our best practices? What are not?" And we looked at our schools that weren't in the room and said, "What are the best practices?" And started building from that. And Ms. Huff Stedler started her presentation with, I think, is the most critical point that was said, Academic Services, Accountability and Testing working together. Just this week, I got an email from a low-performing principal because we just had our meeting for this year in this room. We stayed for two hours going through what this means to you to be a low-performing school and what are the steps. The schools that made it out made presentations on what they found were successful, what they could go back and tell their staff based on what they knew. And then in looking at that, we said, "What do we know?" People started raising their hands. And so I got an email from a principal thanking me and said, "I've been in this district for twenty-two years. I raised my hand needing help. Not one, but all three departments, the Executive Director of Academic Services, all the folks you see here from Accountability, came to my school, met with me, went through the data, went through my PLCs, and started talking about with my school improvement team what we needed to be focusing on." So Ms. Howe, that is one that I'll challenge you, anybody, to get the level of service that you're getting out of that. Now, that goes back to some commitments you all made. We did a restructure and you all allowed us, the Curriculum Committee reviewed what we're doing. And so we have more resources. We added instructional facilitators and curriculum facilitators. So we have committed in those low-performing schools, they will see their curriculum facilitator eleven times a month in their schools out of twenty to twenty-two days. That's a huge resource investment to do, but we're fighting that hard. And I think it doesn't just go with those schools, it's permeating throughout the whole district and how we operate because we are looking at data in a different way. We've always looked at data, we're looking at it a different way and a much more team-oriented approach and learning from each other.
Ms. Roberts?
I realize I say this every time we talk about our schools being graded, and I will continue to say it every single time, that I don't agree with the 20-80 percentage. I wish we could change that. I know that's not up to us because we have students that have great growth during the year and then they get some scores back and they feel so defeated. So I just hope that we continue to let those students know that they did grow and that we appreciate all the hard work that they did and that they are not a number. That's all.
Any other comments or questions before we close? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, your team. Our next item is update on Human Resources. Dr. Maddox and Joey Clinton.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Ramsey, Board members and Superintendent Booker. My name is Joey Clinton and I'm here from Human Resources. I'm the Executive Director of Human Resources. And I'm going to give you a brief update on our current hiring and where we are with filling positions. Currently, we have eighteen certified positions still to fill, two at the elementary level, seven middle school positions, and nine high school positions. The nine new allotments were given out to elementary schools approximately two weeks ago and we filled all but two of those allotments. So principals have done a great job. Since the beginning of the first day of school, we have received eight resignations in the secondary level. So that has, that number continues to fluctuate around. We get positions filled and then we have some, some areas that, that again become open. So we're constantly working on that as well. We also have approximately fourteen, fourteen to sixteen bus driver positions still available. Again, that is a very fluid number. We're working on that as well. We, we finished the first bus training session. Approximately forty-eight folks were trained. Now they've got to wait on the driving portion of the test and we'll have those, those folks ready to go. We have our second bus training session coming up next week. If I'm not mistaken, it's the 25th and 26th of September and it's full as well. So forty-eight more folks are signed up and ready to go there. We have, I, I think our principals have done a fantastic job taking care of the bus routes and I want to say thank you to finance and the board for supporting our TAs and allowing the overtime factor there for those folks. It has really helped out with the, the bus drivers as well. Thank you.
Ms. Cherry?
When is the driving portion?
The driving portion starts this week and it takes three days. Unfortunately though, Board Member Cherry, they can only, they can only drive a certain number at one time. You can't get all these folks. But, but we're going to work on that.
Ms. Roberts?
I believe you said we had eighteen positions that are open?
Yes, ma'am.
So what are we doing in those positions right now? Who are, who's in those classrooms?
In some of those classrooms, of course, we do have long-term subs. We do, we have also allowed teachers to have plug-in positions, schools to have plug-ins. So you have certified staff members teaching those classes. And, and in some of those positions, just a regular sub. So we do have folks in there throughout the day and we just, we're looking for that stability.
And we are also looking at December graduates. We are working very closely with colleges and universities. The Human Resources Department is traveling to colleges and universities in North Carolina, inviting those folks here. We're pleased to tell you tonight that we have thirty-two student teachers/interns in Gaston County for the fall and right now we have another twenty-eight signed up for the spring. Our current teachers and administrators continue to be our best recruiters, sharing the wonderful things that are happening in Gaston County. Mr. Clinton and the HR staff are doing a fabulous job of working with and supporting new teachers. They also have a list of retirees and we are calling on our retirees to mentor, to substitute, and to fill interim positions for us. The great thing about the economy improving is that folks have so many more opportunities. We have college graduates now who expect to come out and make in the mid-fifties. Our first-year teachers are making thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So it has to be a calling to have those people here that are committed and dedicated. But HR and our beginning teacher mentors, our staffs at the school level, buddy teachers, work side-by-side with these teachers to give them every opportunity to be successful and to be role models for them. So even though that number eighteen is not a number that we want to share with you tonight, we can tell you that across the state and across the country, you see these same things with the retirement of the baby boomers and not having those folks going into education. But we're so pleased to say that in Gaston County, we value our teachers and we're here to support them.
Thank you. Mr. Dedman?
I'm just curious, how many lateral entry teachers do we have? Just ballpark, Joey?
I think it's somewhere around thirty, thirty-seven.
Are we doing anything with these eighteen positions that we're looking at, maybe trying to find some people lateral entry?
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Mr. Clinton, Dr. Maddox, on the nine positions that are high school, are those critical area positions, mathematics, science, those sort of things? And then do we have a way, and I'm assuming from what I read in the Gazette, because they're always right, I'm assuming that we have, for a lot of those positions, we have retired teachers, certified teachers in that. But in the ones that we don't, if they're in a particular school, is it a way to flop the class to where maybe a certified teacher that teaches that, that particular subject is teaching for half her class and then flop the sub in there while they're doing their homework and she goes to teach the other class or he?
Yes, we, we're doing that in some of our schools, but also, as I mentioned earlier, the plug-in positions where we have somebody that is a certified teacher on staff teaching that same subject area during their planning, they're coming in to teach those students.
Any other questions? Thank y'all and thank y'all for being proactive with the student teachers. Okay, our next item, Board of Education Committee report, and I'll turn it over to Operations Chair Committee member Kevin Collier.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Ramsey. Our Operations Committee met last Tuesday, September the thirteenth at four o'clock here in the boardroom. Our committee includes Mr. Lee Dedman, Mr. Chris Howe, Mr. myself, and Mr. Mark Upchurch. I got lost on my list over here. All I got to do is look across the boardroom. The following staff members were present for our meeting, Mr. Jeff Booker, Gary Hoskins, Dr. Morgan Hushard, and Sierra Ray. Our agenda included the following things. We were updated on past project and current capital needs for the system and are currently working to look at our current capital needs or future capital needs. There's a resolution that we're going to talk about at, at the end of this report, but one of the other things that went on in our meeting was Rick Brown with Boomerang Architecture presented the interior finishes for the new elementary school. And there's been a lot of work with staff and a lot of work with a lot of people. I had no idea colors were so important. But there's a lot of research that I've learned that goes into colors and why certain colors are chosen and they have really done a good job in picking out the elementary colors. Footers and retaining walls are in place at the new elementary school. A lot of dirt has been moved on that site. Some plumbing has started and the work schedule is on time and the completion date is still on time. Looks like we will take possession of the building around June 2017. So everything is good at the new elementary school. At the new middle school, the sewer line has been completed and much of the preparation work for the footers has been completed and we're on schedule for a completion date around August 2017. There is a RFQ or Request for Qualifications for a commissioning agent for the, both new construction projects. It's now on the website and the firms have two weeks to put requests in. We're still in need, well, you've heard the update on the bus drivers. We were given that update on our agenda as well. School administrators are currently working with local law enforcement and the Department of Transportation to improve traffic flow at our schools. Some of you know where we've had some bigger problems than others and as we saw in the superintendent's letter, some of that mitigation has worked, but we're still continuing to try to, they were giving us update of where we're working with law enforcement to help make those things better. Some of those problems were created by recommendations from our law enforcement and highway people, but they have been quick to help reverse course and help try to straighten those out. A new work truck for school nutrition and a mini-bus van was purchased and delivered and all our summer projects have now been completed. Our next board meeting is scheduled for October 10th at 4:30 here in the boardroom and everybody that's not on the committee is welcome to come. Just to make sure that you have that open. I'll make sure that we get you an agenda a few days beforehand and if there's anything you guys want to ask or come to our meeting, you're more than welcome. And I'll entertain any questions about any of that right now, Mr. Vice Chair.
Does anyone have any question for Mr. Collier? Mr. Howe?
I would say that one of the things that we did discuss was the traffic pattern at North Gaston. In communicating with some parents today, that pattern's been changed effective as this morning and everything that I've heard so far has been two thumbs up, much better. Thank you for the help. So.
Okay. All right. The next item, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Collier, Resolution to Request Allocation of the 2007 Bond Funds.
Mr. Chair, if you would, I'd like to read this resolution that came from our committee. And it's Resolution of Request for Approval Appropriation for the Gaston County Schools. Whereas in November 2007, the citizens of Gaston County approved $175 million bond referendum to provide adequate school facilities for students and employees of Gaston County Schools. And whereas the referendum proposed the building of several new schools and to accommodate the anticipated growth of Gaston, the Gaston region as determined by an independent study. And whereas the anticipated increase in the number of students attending Gaston County Schools has taken longer than initially expected. And whereas the facility which currently houses the students are in desperate need of repair, renovation, and reconstruction. And whereas these needs have been outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan totaling in excess of $700 million. And whereas the 2007 bond order authorizing $175 million in school bonds proposing use, proposed using a portion of the funds for erecting additional school buildings and other school plant facilities, enlarging, reconstructing, renovating, and replacing existing school buildings and other plant facilities. And whereas since the bonds were authorized in 2007, funding has been provided to consolidate three elementary schools and one new school, construct a replacement middle school, construct a new high school, purchase an elementary school, and renovate and remodel various existing schools. And whereas the Gaston County Board of Education has determined that multiple facility needs can be addressed by using the remaining bond proceeds at the three, at their, where the remaining bond proceeds and there, there remains the need for construction of additional school facilities due to population growth and the age of our many facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Gaston County Board of Education requests that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners appropriate $40 million from the 2007 bond referendum to be used for enlarging, renovating, and maintaining existing school buildings and other school plant facilities as outlined in the Capital Improvement Plan and for the purchase of land and construction of one additional school facility. And Mr. Vice Chair, that came from, with unanimous approval from our committee, so that comes with a motion and a second from our committee for this board.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from our committee. Do you have any discussion before the vote? All in favor? It's unanimous. And I just want to thank y'all for the Operations Committee, for y'all's hard work with two new schools and all the other things y'all have going. Y'all might be more busy than our committee, but I don't think so.
You're right.
I know. That's right. We, we took, we took time off. The next honor item is our Consent Agenda and that is an action item, so I will need a motion and a second. Mr. Dedman, make a motion. Ms. Cherry, second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Turn it back over to our Superintendent, Mr. Booker.
Thank you. Members of the board, I hope you'll reflect a moment on that presentation about our results. Folks will want to focus on what does 52% achievement mean. What I want to focus on is 82% of your children exceeded growth, which means you took them from where they were, the projected amount, they either met that or exceeded what was done. That's what we're here to do, is to grow the children and give them more resources as they move forward. Folks challenge about our graduation rate, 88%, and say, is it the same diploma? Well, what we say is what can you do with that? And 709 of our children left with credentials that are, credentials that are applicable for immediate employment. We had one of our parents share at the parent advisory the other night that they had a senior graduate last year and that when they went and got a job using their CNA, that their compensation was higher than the people who were already working there because they had that certification. That's what's going on in our 88% graduation rate. You all know the number of students that came before you last spring with the numerous awards academically and athletically that awarded them scholarships. So great things are going on in our schools and I believe we will continue to see great things. That's a high bar at 88%, but with seven schools at 90%, the other schools are striving. We, that's our goal for this year is that we can continue that climb to break 90% with all of our schools. And so I hope you'll take time as you're in our schools to thank the teachers and the leadership for all that is going on positively. Another thing that I know a lot of you talk about is our study of our history and what our country is about. Wanted to make sure y'all knew Constitution Day was just passed and it is something that is part of our curriculum and people discussed throughout the district. And so we appreciate what has gone before and what our founders did for us and we study a lot of the things of our heritage. We are fortunate that Kia of Gastonia has committed to partnering with us for the fourth year to give a car away. And so I invite you to put on your calendar, November 16th at 4:00 PM, Stewart W. Kramer High School will host the...
High School will host the ceremony where one of our employees will have their name drawn. And so it's just an honor that Mr. Hafer continues to support our school system. And as you're out at our games, you'll see Ruben Jones from Kia showing off some of the automobiles and just being a part. They're giving away oil changes and things. They really want to recognize our educators and thank them for what they do in this community. Also, just to give you a, a brief thing about our SAT scores, another measure of what's going on in your district. We can't tell you the actual number until September 30th, but I can tell you we'll have good news and nothing you're going to have to apologize for, so we will look forward to that release. I want to thank our parents for meeting with us last week. We had a parent advisory at Ashbrook. The facility there was in great shape, and the staff was very welcoming, and all those representatives were there who gave us good feedback. We surveyed them since to see how they want to be engaged as parent meetings, but they gave us time that night to hear about these results and to hear about what is going on in your schools. You saw an example today of what we shared with them in our high schools about the blended learning. We talked about what we've changed in the middle schools with our math curriculum, and then talking about the engagement that's going on in our elementary schools. So I, I believe we've gotten off to a great start this year, and we have not let up on what we know are our basics. And one of the things is to be really sensitive to the climate in our schools and our children's safety and bullying. And so we're hosting guest speakers this week at our middle and high schools to share information about character and kindness and compassion, the principles of the Rachel's Challenge program. We've also introduced another program with the help of the United Way this year that will further enhance our student climate and what is going on in schools. So there's a lot that is going on and a lot of comments. I will just like to close by saying thank you to all of our teachers. They can't, they started showing up in early August, long before their paychecks started showing up, and setting their rooms up and being engaged. They came to the summer enrichment training. They came to the teaching and learning conference, all on their own time, and they became ready for our schools. And administrators supported that and did a lot of hard work. And any of you who got the chance to visit over at One Learning Place and watch when our registration process and the work that went on by that staff and the long hours, it was not unusual for them to be there till 7, 8 o'clock at night, serving our customers in this, this community. And so I just want to thank everyone for making it a good, smooth start of school. We've had our bumps and scrapes, but overall, when you roll 32,000 children into 54 locations and all the hard work that Joey and his team did, having folks there, and then knowing we're going to have gaps and filling those gaps, it's just an impressive thing, and I'm just honored to be a part of it. So thank you to everyone out there and their efforts, and I appreciate you all's support and all that we got done. Please. And I do not need a closed session, no sir, thank you.
Well, on behalf of our board, I would like to thank you for your leadership, Mr. Booker, and thank the cabinet, or all of our staff out there, and especially our teachers that are who are on the front lines. You sure are making us look good, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. Well, this time, I'll last close adjournment. Go ahead.
Mr. Vice Chair, if it pleases, the board would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second. Ms. Cherry, all in favor? Thank you all. Good night.